We've had two sets of minutes from the last two minutes, the last two meetings that we approved. Everybody go over them?
Yep. Can I make a motion that we approve February 13, 2019?
You second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And?
February 27, 2019, motion made to accept.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Minor plan alteration to JAA Solar. Got you right on top so you can get out of here in a hurry. I appreciate it.
So, good evening. My name is Christopher King with Atlantic Design Engineers. And as I noted, we're here before you this evening to allow for a minor modification to a previously approved plan. As you know, we finished the planning board process after you folks. The very end of the planning process, it was determined based on town council's legal opinion that our available access point, which was previously diagonally kind of across this intersection of the Brook Street Extension or Aubrey and Pine Street, that we needed to slide it down basically and come out where we had legal frontage along Brook Street. So that required us to make, like I said, a minor plan change, which has been already reviewed and approved by Beta Group, the towns engineer. But basically, instead of coming diagonal like we did before, essentially maintaining the same access point on the curve but bringing the road further down and then arcing it to realign more with Pine Street across the way. It's essentially the same design from a stormwater standpoint, it's just sliding the road down. It actually allowed us to extend this road plantings down as well. And the road basically shifted in anywhere from three to six feet or so. So, I'd like to open it up for any questions if you have any. It's also worth to point out as well that in the shift, you know, it's the same design as far as the crossing. We put the same level of detail into it as far as depths to make sure that we meet or exceed the stream crossing standards that are set forth by DEP. And it actually, by sliding it down, we were previously coming in here where it's a little bit wider. It's actually one of the more narrow sections along that area. So we're going to be further away from the bank, if that makes sense, from the actual stream bed with the three open bottom box culvert. I have some green cards as well. Charlie was looking through my file. It just documents all the changes going to DEP subsidies.
Now, has this, has the original plan been approved? Has the original plan approved? Or is this?
This is the plan that we have to approve.
Okay. This is, okay, but I'm saying the original plan-
Guess what?
-has been approved. So we're just here to approve the alteration.
That's right.
The plan alteration. All right, I don't have any questions. All right.
Jim, Jack?
I'm Rob Carter.
Oh yeah, that's right too.
Okay, okay.
I have a question. Is there any change at all from how you presented it to the planning board?
The last presentation to the planning board, I mentioned it last time, as part of when we made this modification, one of the planning board conditions was to send the plan, because Peter Williams, I'm sorry, Peter Williams of GZA did not have a lot of time to review the plan. And so, the planning board had a condition that we sent him the plan and he had adequate time to review it, which he did. He approved it, but he noted that we had what we call a Skripner's error. This contour line here was actually labeled a 72, should have been a 71. This is the low area here where everything drains down. And so he requested that we change that, and so we did so. And he had emailed Carrie Easterday at the planning board just letting her know that, you know, he approved the drawings with a slight change due to the Skripner's error, which was literally changing a one, I'm sorry, a two to a one.
One other question. Was Laura, was she involved in checking this change? Was it Laura, the girl from, that does your conservation?
Oh, oh, no, where I'm from.
Yeah. Did she have any, she need to check any of that or-
She did.
-for the change? She did?
Oh yeah.
For this one?
Yes.
And it all came out that she?
I had emailed her after the planning process, just because I think she was expecting it, just to let her know that we had made a change. And I believe I had sent her the PDFs as well.
There's no other, I'm going to make a motion. You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the plan alteration as described.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Tom.
Where's Mr. Barrowby stopped? Mr. Barrowby, where are you?
Okay, this is a septic repair.
Charlie needs that stuff.
James Hall, Mountain Hope Engineering, representing Mr. Barrowby. James Hall, Mountain Hope Engineering, representing Mr. Barrowby. We have a septic system replacement. Regional systems front yard, driveways over on this side. We have the footland on the side yard. We got a wetland here 75 feet away. We have the leach field, hay bales, silt fence.
Let me-
Raise, raise, a raised system.
Well, let me find out where Sesame Street is. I know the one on TV. You know where it is?
Yeah, I've been, I've been down there, but- Do you like to read upside down? Are you doing it not so?
No, this is north. And I want to be in front of him. Where the heck is it? Where is it? Show me on the bonding street.
Oh, here it is. Here's the locus here. Here's the locus here.
Flip it, flip it. Can't read it.
Flip it. Turn it, turn it this way. Turn the whole paper.
You can read that?
No, it's upside down.
It doesn't make any difference if it's upside down. You can't read it. It's unclear.
Well, I just, you pick up a couple streets.
Well, I can't. I need you to tell me where the damn place is.
That's where he's off from Williams, right?
I've got a bunch of planes over there, guys, if you want to grab a-
Off Williams.
We've got extra planes. We've got a whole ton of planes up there. The five guys here in one plane.
Sesame's off Williams and then off Maple.
It's off William?
It's off on, off Maple, off Williams.
Okay, all right, I'm on target there. On William Street-
It's down to Barrowby Drive.
You're on 44, you're on 44 on William Street. You're heading towards Reed Brothers. And as you're going down there, you come to Maple Street. You take a right onto Maple Street. And then it's, it's a left in there before the river. The river is down lower and it's one of those streets that loops around.
The river runs behind it.
River runs behind it, yeah.
Carriage Park Drive.
That's how it runs down Sesame Street as well, which is off the London Street. I'm a neighbor of all of this. That's why I wanted to know what was going on.
That's the wrong plan, Jim.
It is, well, but I'm looking at the, you got a whole street idea, but uh- I'm saying this map is a lot clearer.
Now I see both the streets. Let's negotiate it.
Okay. Do I give you a better location?
Yeah, now I know where Sesame Street is.
Yeah, it makes a loop. It's, it's, it's south of Maple Street.
Barrowby Drive.
Yeah.
Totally, yeah. I'm going to say 20, 30 years ago.
Yeah, probably more like 30.
30 years ago. And it was Barrowby, this guy's father, that built it all, back in the day.
Yeah, Sesame runs from Maple Street to Barrowby.
And then Barrowby goes up back to Williams.
Correct.
This is right at the base.
And if you go, if you stay on Barrowby, isn't that, it goes down to the river and you have a little bridge over the river that-
No.
That's not the one, that's, that's the next one down.
That's totally St. John's Drive.
St. John's Drive.
You go into a cul-de-sac, you take a right turn, you have to take a right turn. This house is the first house.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, I'm there with it.
Well, then, ten Horton and then Maple.
You all set, Jack?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Where's the river?
I'm not sure if it's here.
It's in this backyard.
It's in here.
Right here.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that whatever he does over there is not going to have a lot of fill that's going to alter how the river-
Well, this is septic repair.
Okay, so he's not adding like any more like dirt or anything over there?
Well, it may have to be elevated, I'm not sure.
Soon, as soon as we get our questions answered, you can come up here and run him up and down. You can do whatever you want.
I just have that, that's my main question is because I've ever plowed all my yards.
Let us, let us, let us get going here. We're not, we're not ready to go yet either.
Okay. So existing is here?
Existing spring lot.
Okay.
Takes a whole front yard out otherwise we will name the front yard. This is the driveway.
Okay.
So there's really no room. There's trees in here. Take all these trees down. We got a stone wall here.
Okay, so your proposal is where? Right here?
Right here.
So it's right, okay, so um, what's this here?
That there is just like a door pan. It's existing. The stone wall pretty much signifies which you've got a wooded line in.
And so how far is this from the river here?
The river would be out here.
Okay, so where's the wetland here then?
Right here.
Okay, here, but, no, but it doesn't show it here.
No, it's a house. It's a house next door. I don't know if she's referring to-
Oh, I see.
Another house here and a house here.
Okay, all right, okay. I, I'm on-
Cul-de-sac, he actually is opening up right there.
Okay, all right. Okay, so this is the side yard, not the backyard?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, that's-
Front door is right here.
Well, no, I'm looking at this here. I wasn't sure. See, was, was another street here. Okay, all right.
Nope, nope.
Okay, so you're-
The basics of it is a lot, lot, lot-
So you're 75 feet from the, okay, all right.
Which is in the woods, wooded, so we're not touching any of that. We're not going out there clearing any.
Okay, so the elevation on this, okay, actually, so any water that flows from the street is going to come, it's going to go around your septic and then into the swamp. So you'll have it built up from here? It'll be built up to the house?
It's actually, the grades are blending back into the house. The foundation's sitting way up. So we're going to, we're going to marry that with the fill.
Okay.
And then we're required under Title V to have at least five foot of flat area between property line and toe of our slope.
Okay, it's not a slope?
Toe of slope. We can't fill to the property line. We need five feet of flat or a drainage ditch or so that we don't push that water on to neighboring property.
But then there's no one back here anyway, so you're-
That's correct. We wouldn't want to do this.
So no one's going to be affected.
We don't want to do this with the water. We're not going this way.
Yeah, no, I know.
The water goes this way, then has to run down.
But now, there's, you said, is there a house right here?
Yeah, you went to the left of the right if you're looking at it.
I'm not on Sesame Street. I'm on Maple Street, but I'm on, I'm behind you on the other side of the river. I'm not sure which house is yours, but there's like several houses on the other side of that river that-
Yeah, to be honest with you, the only two affecting properties you'd be left on right of this.
Yeah.
Actually left, because over here, nothing's happening. We got no action going here. Everything's right here. Whoever this a butter is would be the, sort of the concerned party.
Yeah, but yeah, you've got the 25 feet of, roughly 25 feet of untouched property.
Right.
Roughly.
Yeah.
So there's, so any, any water that's flowing from here, it has ample location to go, to go through.
Yep.
System will be raised?
Raised. Trying to marry the grade, you know, sloping down, we're trying to do this.
It's not raised right now.
It is not raised right now. Maybe slightly, but it's, hasn't been working. The system hasn't been working for a while. So, good soils, but the system was put in the water table.
But when the house was built, the groundwater level was different?
No, I'd say there wasn't a sort of evaluation going on back before 1995, so the education level wasn't there.
So actually, you're, the way it looks here, you, it may only be raised maximum of two feet above here. Because you're talking 77 here.
You got a 77.
And you got a 76 here.
Right, and on the downhill side, though, he's probably four feet taller than the low side.
Yeah, but that's not going to be a problem because that, that goes into the swamp.
Correct. So we do have to jack it up a little bit.
It's here, it's here that, that's going, that would, yeah.
Correct, so this water would come off, do this and do this.
Yeah.
This water's just coming out, like you said, just heading right to the swamp. And it's just long, it's just long now.
Now, here's just a thought that, that's something, if there were to be water that would build up here, if there were to put a PVC pipe in here to do any collecting, so it wouldn't have to go all the way around. Just something for you to think about. I mean, it's not really our area, but that would certainly prevent anything from backing up against the house. You know, just having a PVC, because you're going to have all flow this way.
No, it's going to the street. We're up here. Front door is here to the street.
Okay.
We're higher than the street. You see that comes to the 78, 77, 76, so we're two, three feet higher than the street.
Oh, that's going to go to the street, okay, all right.
And we're also higher than the driveway, so once it gets into this point right here, it's just doing this.
Oh, all right, okay.
It's, it's almost doing that now, pretty much, so we're just obviously elevating the system and redirecting it around the bone.
Okay. No other questions here? Would you like to come up and see your plan?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out like, so where, do you live between Carriage Park and Barrowby?
It's Barrowby. This is Barrowby.
Oh, it is Barrowby where you live. Oh, I thought you lived on Sesame Street.
Uh, no, no, the name, Barrowby's the owner. It's on Sesame Street. Barrowby's the owner that we're here for.
Right, and that house, is it between Carriage Park and Barrowby?
It's at the end of the cul-de-sac, not the end, but everywhere the, the road turns.
Turns to Barrowby?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're on-
I'm more behind, yeah, like, because Sesame Street is, I can look through my window and cars coming down is where Sesame Street is.
Right.
Because I'm set way back on, so that's probably why I got the thing in the mail.
You got the notice, but I don't, yeah. So she's not at the wreck of butter. She's in a butter of butter, meaning-
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Now that I understand where you are, I was trying to figure out where that house, where your house, is it your house?
No, it's not my house.
Oh, somebody else's, all right. No, I understand what you're trying to-
It's a septic repair. The old system failed. They have to repair it.
Right.
It'll have, it's basically the same footprint. It'll be elevated.
Okay.
But it shouldn't make it, well, it might take a smidgen of difference in how it floods.
It's not going to affect you any. It's not going to affect you.
You can get a teacup full of water extra.
No, probably not anything extra where I am. I just wanted to, I thought it was somebody who, like, I didn't understand why they sent it to me then if I wasn't really a buttoned that.
Required by law.
To give you a night out.
Yeah, I had a rush to get here. I'm like, I'm going to be late.
It happens so often. Many, many, a lot is notified and they're, they're really not concerned parties, but it's law, so.
Yeah, well, it's good because then people can't say, we didn't know.
Exactly.
Excuse me?
I move that we accept the plan for replacement of the failing system.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
Oh yeah?
You guys are up.
All right, all right, we'll be, we'll be quick. I couldn't help but make a joke to Josh whether, where does a Cookie Monster live on Sesame Street, but I didn't. So this is-
Borrego Solar?
Borrego Solar, yes. So good to see all of you.
Can we read this?
I want to introduce myself to you. I hear you're Chris Capone, right? It's David Albrecht. Nice to meet you. We're working in West Portland, Chris, so I want to introduce myself. So again, my name is David Albrecht, professional engineer at Borrego Solar. We're located in Lowell, Massachusetts.
They go on.
Okay.
So we're here for, I think we met with you a couple weeks ago and talked about what was appropriate for what we're proposing and we all agreed to request for determination of applicability at 2734 Elm Street here in Dayton was the appropriate process. I will go over with you all, because I know not all of you were here last time. We're, we've already received approval, we actually just received the fine, the signed ORAD for the solar project that's at the very, very west end of this parcel. That doesn't show up on this particular plan, but it's on the west side of the 200-foot wide power easement. And what we're here before you tonight is a request for determination of applicability for a new gravel road around the most easterly solar project that exists right now. Elm Street is off to the east here. North is straight up. This is the roadway that comes in. It goes through these, it goes through these wetlands. This is the first system and then there's another system here. And then the easement, and then the new system that the ORAD was approved, I think it was sometime last year. So what we've got outlined here is the wetlands that were approved by this commission a year or so ago. The orange is the fence line around the existing system. And then, as I mentioned, here's the road that runs through the system. So this is, all these systems are owned by and operated by the same company, NRG Clearwater. And we're hoping that we're the one that's to the west of the solar project, west of the easement, we'll, we'll be constructing that for them as well. So, through discussions with them, they were fearful as well as we are, because we're the contractor, we're going to build this for them, that bringing tractor trailer trucks and future operations and maintenance vehicles, and then hopefully not, but emergency vehicles, in order to get to the west side of this one, they have to go, they have to open a gate, drive through it, open another gate and go through it. And so we all decided that the best option here was to actually create a new gravel road around the the south side of this first project. Again, this is the one that's closest to Elm Street. And so we've, we've had this all approved by as a minor modification with the planning board. Peter Williams of GZA has reviewed it, approved it, and so now we're before you for an RDA. So it's, it's basically a 12-foot wide minimum gravel road. It's wider in places because we need to have enough radius and width for a semi-trailer truck and a fire truck. So it comes around the south side. We have a little bit of grating right here. I don't know if any of you have been out there or recall if you've walked it. There's a bit of a piece of ledge here. And then, so we're going to be filling this area here so we can get a gradual slope for the road so we can go down the road safely. It'll have a swale along the south side of it. And any runoff from the road will go into what we're going to call a, sort of a very long level spreader, where water will be able to pool up and go over a berm. And at the top of that berm, it's about a foot of pea gravel. So it filters any water that goes over. And it basically, it's not a point source, it's just going to all flow over a wide, much wider area. So that takes all the water from this part of the road and all the water from, from here over. So that's about three quarters of the road. And the other quarter of the road is going to go the slope this way and along here to a culvert and a very small little level spreader in this location.
How much of that is in the buffer zone? It looks like some-
Some of it, some of it. Blue line is the buffer zone. This whole area here is, was previously disturbed as part of this project. There's, there's a few downed trees in here that will have to be pulled out in order for us to build this road. This is, this part of the road is all at grade. This part of the road is all at grade. There will be some excavation here. We've shown on here that we're putting in silt sock and silt fence, so we're going to double up our erosion controls because we're within, we're close to 50 feet of a wetland and under the-
Is this going to be a permanent road or is it only going to be a temporary access?
It's a permanent road. It's going to be a permanent road. And the, the swales and the level spreaders, those will be permanent as well. What I was going to say was that the Construction General Permit, EPA Construction General Permit, will be disturbing over an acre, so we'll be filing electronic notes of intent with them and have a SWIP as part of that. And that, I believe, is a condition of the planning board's approval, that we provide that to them and we can also provide that to you all. If you're within, you have to always maintain a 50-foot natural buffer between your work and a wetland. And so in order to do that, where you've already got sort of vegetation removed as part of, you know, whether it's, you know, it's the way it was when you found it or it's because of this, this project, you have to, you have to mimic a 50-foot buffer. So that's why we put two types of erosion control, so just a second protection. The silt sock, which is a big, big mulch tube that sits on the ground. And then behind it, we'll have a silt fence. And once everything is stabilized, those, those will be removed. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do you have these wetlands flagged?
These are taken from the original delineation.
No, I'm talking about up, up at the corner.
Over here?
Yes.
Those are part of the original delineation as well. It's still, it's still a valid delineation. It's been less than, you know, considerably less than three years.
Okay, and the green line that goes? No, not that one, the next one.
This one? That one?
You went too far. Slow down. Go back to that corner. Go up, take a, take a little bit of a right. Yeah, or that line.
That's the, that's the 100-foot buffer zone.
That's the 100-foot buffer.
To this wetland and to this wetland. They kind of come together right here. That's, that's the 100-foot and then this is the 100-foot over here. So some of this project already, was already in, and I think any of the work that they did around the outside and clearing they did was all within the 100-foot. Make sure that, maybe a little bit around here.
I don't want to look at that.
You're up over here, right? You're up here.
Gentlemen, please.
No, no, but I'm just saying.
Gentlemen, please.
I'm just looking for-
Well, is it, that's normal.
Yeah. Okay. The hell was over here somewhere? Is someone there?
Did you?
Okay. Up here.
I haven't looked at any flags up there or looked at any maps up there. But I'm close, I'm close enough to walk over there and look. But I'm close, I'm close enough to walk over there and look. It just seems to me that the corner that I was referring to on the other page.
Oh, up in here?
Yeah. Was awful wet.
It is, it is very wet down here.
No, I'm talking about right there at the corner, right at the edge of the fence that's, that's erected right now. And that's my only, I'd like to take a look at that.
So right in this, this is the, this is the gate.
They both exist.
This is the gate right here. This is very, this is very steep right through here. There's a mound right here.
You guys are talking.
There's a, as far as topography is, there's a, there's a, this is the highest point right here. There's a mound. I gather it's probably ledge. There may be exposed ledge, and it slopes this way. And it slopes on the order of probably close to 10 or 12 feet down to the wetland. So if this is wet here, it might be just because there's a localized low spot that when they, when they constructed this project, they didn't, they just sort of created.
It's been a while since I've been up there, but I've been up there since the construction of the new fence and, and, and the, and the solar panels. And I, and I walked the fence line, and I came around the corner. And when you got off the ledge that's in the corner.
That's the ledge right here, yeah.
The ledge is right there?
There's ledge right, yeah, it starts right, this is the high point right here in this part of the site, and then it flattens. It's very, very, very flat right through here. This is where there's all the downed trees that they cut to make sure they didn't fall onto the fence, and they've, they've left those. But this is the high point, and then it goes, it goes down a foot, and then it's really flat from, this is the 106 contour, all the way to here, which is 105.
No, right in that pile right there. Is that a bigger setup of plans?
Yes, it should be a bigger set, you know, that should be this set.
I'm hard of hearing and I can't see very well. Okay, now, I, I want to revisit something that you had said earlier. Okay, this access road here that you're proposing.
Yes.
Is for what purpose?
It's for construction, so construction of the third system to the, to the west.
And how is, so, has that been submitted yet?
Yes, you, this commission approved the ORAD for that project because it's not within the 100-foot buffer zone at all.
But you're going to, are you?
It's another solar field.
Yeah, oh, no, but I'm looking here. So, okay, so this is the roadway here?
Yes.
The next solar field.
Oh, I see, okay, that's what I, okay, that's what I didn't see. So that's an existing roadway there?
This is an existing road here.
Okay, all right, okay. I see what you're doing now. I, okay, I see what you're doing here. So you're tying into an existing roadway there?
Correct.
Okay, now that makes sense to me.
Yeah. It's a, it's, it's logistics stuff during construction because coming through here with the large equipment could be, you know, we could, this, this system could get damaged. Also, post-construction, you know, if there would need to be any kind of emergency management personnel, fire truck that need to go all the way to the west to put out a fire in the power easement, they'd have to open up a gate. It has an OX box on it, so they, they have access to it. They have to open up that one, they have to open up that one, and, you know, this is not the best way to get someplace.
Okay.
And the fire chief agreed with us. He, he reviewed this and accepted it.
Now, that existing roadway that's there, how wide is that?
Well, it's anywhere from 10 to 14 feet wide. It kind of varies throughout its course. It's probably the narrowest as it goes through the wetlands.
And you're not going to be widening that?
No, we will be improving it. It was a requirement of the plane board. So one of the, the original conditions for the solar project was to do some pruning and make sure it was appropriate for emergency management, for the fire, for fire trucks.
And improvement consists of?
Really placing more gravel.
Higher, wider?
Higher.
The road already goes to or by a second system.
Correct.
That's west of what we're looking at right now. It's trying to avoid.
No.
Damage to the solar.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I'm here that. But I don't want to see a 10-foot road become a 20-foot road.
We've already approved an ORAD and a wetland line for all this complex. Whatever's existing there, they can't go any wider than this right at, right at the moment.
Correct.
If we watch them, they can't.
Well, we, the plane board, we're going to be required to hire Peter Williams, the GZA, to watch over any construction related to the project.
Will you be filing when you construct the, the next system?
Yes, well, file, what do you mean by filing?
Yeah.
With, with, with your group, with Conservation Commission, or what do you mean by that?
Yes.
Will we be?
I mean, is it all within uplands, the next solar field?
It is.
You can file the ORAD.
We filed the ORAD. It was actually a group prior to us.
But if they're going to be within the buffer zone area, you're going to need to file with us.
They're not. So that will not be. The only area where we would, where we'll be in the buffer zone is right here along this road. And that's why we came in a month ago and asked if it should be an RDA or.
When you, when you get ready to build your solar field, you'll be filing with the commission?
No, there's no, we're not, there's no work within the 100-foot buffer zone on the other solar project.
So that was the ORAD that you just gave, you gave me to start the meeting. We're staying outside the 100-foot there. It's, it's very steep as you get really west on this property, and we, we, we can't build on those slopes within, within the 100-foot, so we're staying outside of it. And as we basically approached this project, it just became, it became very tough logistically. And this road, I don't know if anyone's driven through this system, probably not because it's always locked up, but we did have a site visit with the planning board and with one of the abutters, who you might know, Ron, to the north, who was concerned about the grain. Yep, so this is a tough road to come through. It's very steep, turns a little bit sideways at, at points.
A little difference there too, if I recall.
Yep.
It's not as steep as what you got ahead of you after you go by the next solar.
Exactly.
Yeah, up, going up to the easement?
Yep.
Yeah.
A short one.
That'll be a short.
And that, that next road is all outside the 100-foot buffer. It's just this section here. This is the only area, so that's why, that's why we're showing you this plan, not all the, all the different arrays and all that.
No other questions here? Gentlemen, Jack? Okay. No, that's all right.
No, right here. This is the next.
Okay.
System. I don't have any more questions.
I don't have any. I move that we accept the request by Borrego Solar for their gravel road and issue a determination.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Now, there's no place for you, there's no place for you to sign on an RDA, so you'll be signing an ORAD then?
I don't understand what you're saying.
The, the approval of, of the request for determination of applicability.
Issue a determination of applicability.
Right, so is that, does that happen next meeting, or does that just come from you, Charlie?
Well, we've got 21 days, but it wouldn't be before that.
Okay.
I, I brought a form this tonight. We can sign it tonight, and I can do it in my leisure.
Okay, so when you can scan it, or, well, we could, we will need the original at some point, obviously, just like that one.
You'll get it by certified mail.
You'll get it, we'll get, okay. So you said 21 days. Is it not only 10 days?
No, the wetland act gives us 21 days.
Oh, 21 days to act, not, not talking, okay.
Well, we act it tonight.
Right.
But we've got 21 days to follow up.
Right, okay, wonderful.
We'll fill it right into that.
All right, wonderful. Well, Josh will be all over you. He has your email now.
We have our weekly emails.
All right, thanks so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
River Hawk Environmental.
No, that's, wait a minute.
No, we got TLC. Number three.
TLC Development, Zero Horton Street.
Okay, get those in.
The receipt from, is that?
Can I get it to you tomorrow? Here's, here's the reason why. I meant to call, okay, my credit card over. We haven't accomplished.
I sent you an email.
I know you did. The ad, the ad ran, which is the key thing, right? I'll be, I gotta be in town tomorrow at nine o'clock. I'll swing by the Gazette.
Scout's on the, scout's on the, you need every tomorrow?
Absolutely. No, email, I'll, I'll deliver it. I'll bring it right to you.
I sent you the sheet with it that threatened you of not opening a hearing unless you presented the damn receipt.
It's been a long day, Charlie. Very long day.
But usually we only let trustworthy people.
It's only Dick's men, interests. That again.
See, the festival last, you're going to give me a hard time.
Don't go too far away because we can't see that distance.
We have trouble hearing you.
They hold right in it. I told you, they shoot that one right at it.
How's this?
Does that work?
It works.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Paulman with Site Tech Engineering. Here with me tonight is Chris Capone, a wetland scientist that flagged the delineation that we filed the, the INRAD on. The, the site, the address is Zero Horton Street. It's actually map seven lot 22. It's located on the north side of Horton Street. This site has been before a commission, I believe it was back in 2017. There was an INRAD filed at that time. For whatever reason, this area out here was not delineated on, as part of that application. I did speak to the wetland scientist that did the previous flagging. He said it was at the request of the applicant at that time. They weren't, you know, they were aware there was an upland there. The applicant didn't want to invest the money at that point. I think they were just kind of looking for a way to, you know, get across the stream at that point. So they really weren't concerned with this area. But since then, the property has been bought by TLC Development, and quite simply, we're just looking to establish the remaining upland on the property. So as you can see, this lightly shaded green area here, we have 14 flags, wetland flag A1 through A14 that were delineated by Chris Capone and.
Who?
Chris Capone, a wetland scientist.
Yes, sir.
And that's the delineation that we had filed for. Would you be happy to answer any questions, or Chris could get into more of the specifics if you have any questions, you know, pertaining to the actual line itself?
Close enough to.
All we're talking about is that piece right there on the pole. Just this. The, the remain, all these flags that you see here, previously approved.
I know the area.
Yeah.
Now, didn't they, didn't the ORAD cover some flags in this area too? The original ORAD for the previous one up?
Right here, these, see, approved wetland line for two. Yeah, these flags here, this is a new line, right here. It's kind of, there, there's walls on three sides. You have the Horton Street to the south, and there's a stone wall on the east here. There's also a stone wall on the north side, and another stone wall here. Seems as though those walls, when they were built way back when, were built for a reason. They're kind of, you know, I'm sure that the back piece was real wet, and they were just kind of separating that. It seems to follow the wetland line pretty accurately, although, you know, you do have a little bit of a wetland that does come in on the interior of that wall.
You have a buffer zone improving in the lot from a lot across the street?
Excuse me?
In this case, Charlie, there are no wetlands immediately across the street from that upland. There are a little further to the, as you head to the east, closer to the other wetland as it crosses, but immediately across the street, there is, I did purposely look in that area, and there is nothing directly parallel with that upland area.
How much depth of this lot? I don't have a riddle with me.
I'd say that's.
I would say it's just over 100 feet.
Yeah, I'd say about 125.
I think it was like 110 or something like that.
You're just talking about the flagged area.
Yeah, from, from the right away, Charlie, to, to the deepest portion, yeah, I, um. I don't have a scale with me. I don't think I do.
No. Sixty, is that what it is? Oh, yeah, sixty feet. So sixty feet. So that's 90 feet right off. Yeah, okay, so that's 100 feet for the flag.
This is actually steel. No math required. Yeah, about 120.
I'm a digit, I can figure it out.
About 120.
To the street?
To the street line, correct. From the street line here and to say wetland flag A7, yeah, about 120 feet.
I know this is just for delineation that you're doing this, right?
Correct.
You got to put a septic system in outside of the 100-foot.
The red flags, true.
No, no, I know, but I'm just, so that leaves them right here. I'm pumping it down the street.
Correct.
That's a future worry.
Yeah.
Everyone that looked at this property that I looked at in the past, we're looking to try to do exactly what you said. Everyone that looked at this property that I looked at in the past, were looking to try to do exactly what you said. So this, this section of the property does confine them not to necessarily meet the requirements for septic system citing there. So that's why a lot of people walked away from this property. TLC happens to have been able to purchase the whole acreage now, and they have access to the back, or twiers to their land that they abutted. So it kind of makes it
Well, there's, there's somebody in between, I mean, there's, you're talking about this back
Yeah, they, yeah.
The, the abut is in that direction, there's a piece of land in between the
That's correct, the I trust, in between them and the I, so, yeah.
So everyone that looked at this was trying to do immediately on Horton Street.
Okay, well, have you seen, just so that you know, you have seen that stream in action with, with a, with a good flow?
Yep.
It was, I have pictures of it being 150 feet wide flowing way over its banks.
Right, yeah, it's a very flat flood, flood area within that section of the wetland, correct?
Not owned by a construction company, so, nothing, nothing that can't be done.
Well, the previous owner did clear this, so this was cleared without any filings at some point, so
He did a lot of things that
Whoever this owner was
Didn't make with our approval.
They actually had John the Botanist flag it, and when I went to look at it, his flags were in the wetland by 30, 40 feet, so the kind of, the tree cutter went by that. So actually, you'll see some of this cutting is beyond what my delineation represents, because of the soils.
Is there still an enforcement order for this property over here, area over here? He hasn't gotten a release from the enforcement order?
No, but he doesn't own the land that he was, it doesn't make much difference.
Well, sure, it continues on to the new owner.
Yeah, but they're not pending anything back here.
No, oh, I know.
They're, they're falling for this.
No, but that's just for their information, that, I think it's, they should be aware of that.
I think Jeff may be aware of that.
I, I am now.
Yeah, I'm sure John probably made it pretty clear to Mr. Loaks when he, or TLC, when they bought the property.
Yes. Well, maybe not fully, but we obviously, anything done in the future can be addressed.
Well, you should order conditions. The guy didn't pay attention to it, you just take the paper, and you give it to him, they stick it in the drawer, and go and do what you want.
Happens more than you think. I'm sure you guys see it on a regular basis.
He was supposed to swamp mat across the street. I worked with people that didn't move swamp mats, they hook a chain, hook it, pulled it, ride on it, walk on it.
Yeah, you turn and walk ahead of your
This guy grabbed one at a time, went in and out of the driveway, and piled the wall right next to the brook. Made one hell of a mess, knocked trees over. So we issued an enforcement order, then he decided he wasn't, he wasn't going to go any further.
So, so long as you know that, there's enforcement on this area over here.
Thank you.
So Faniff delineated the front part?
No, Chris did.
This one part I did, Faniff got the approval on the remaining.
How'd you get involved with this?
Well, he didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah, he, we had him look at it, and he was going to file it. If you, if you notice, the INRAD has changed. We had changed it from
Oh, I didn't pay attention to the INRAD part, yeah.
Okay, well, we gotta go out there, take a look at it, and then, um, so we'll continue it until our next meeting, we'll get down there. Now, the flags are nice and visible with all the numbers, okay?
Yes, they are.
Oh, yeah, this guy fits good flags.
Well, he didn't do it, though. Chris, Chris, right?
Yes, they're all there.
Despite what you think, he saw them nice and high.
I put them on, too. I feel bad for Seabees.
Okay.
So we'll continue the meeting, the hearing until whatever the next second Wednesday.
April. We'll get down there.
It'll be easy to take a look at, you know, it's
They're very easy, obviously, you can, no, you can see it from the road, honestly, they're not visible.
What we're saying is we don't, we won't have to get an agent to come in and, and charge you extra.
We appreciate it.
In, in this case, I don't necessarily think that's required.
Okay, it seems, it seems pretty straightforward, not being a wetland scientist, but to me, it seems pretty straightforward, so.
Ten.
Ten?
Yep.
Something I learned how to use this goddamn phone.
You know, if there's any kids listening in on this
That's just a
Ten, April 10.
They're gonna, they're gonna learn some new language.
That's the 13th of next month, no, I didn't
Not if they're writing their school books, they won't learn nothing, no.
It's 10, Charlie. The 11th of April.
All right, April 10. Hold on, remember that Wednesday.
The guy says 10 over here, Charlie.
Pardon?
April 10th.
April 10th.
It's a 10. April 10th of Tuesday.
You in the right mouth?
Something Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the 11th.
I have the time.
You have the time?
Yeah, I have the time. What kind of phone is that, Charlie?
It's a 10, absolutely.
Not so smart phone? Are you 2018? You can change your calendar.
That's what I did, I looked at the years, I was wrong here.
See you then, thank you very much.
Motion to continue with the 10?
Same time, same place.
All right, we'll leave Chris on that.
Yeah. Was this bear in your backyard? Was this bear been seen in your backyard?
Not my backyard.
No?
Also, it's 12 flags, 13 flags.
Good night, guys.
All right, guys, Jeff, you're all set. Thank you, gentlemen, it's good to see you. You too, now.
Jim made a motion to continue this till
Yes.
April, April 10.
Do you second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay.
We need to sign a COC request from River Hawk Environmental, lot 95, map 22. 3081 Hunter's Hill Drive.
Oh, we haven't heard from that guy in a long time.
They still in operation up there?
What's that?
They still going on up there?
Well, they tried to do this three months ago, and it stalled, and now they're back at it again.
All right, good deal.
Very good.
Pass it down.
What is a COC, Charlie?
Have a good night, guys.
Have a good night.
Scientifical compliance.
Scientifical compliance.
Oh, so they're done?
They're done. The map is attached right to that.
All right, so let's see what
Okay, we gotta sign an extension permit for Tant Yacov?
We'll settle after this, one thing at a time. They had to establish those lines on the lot, and they have installed markers on it. What's it say there?
Permanent limited disturbance marker.
Okay, that's what they have to do.
And they did it.
Yes, there should be one on the other side, too.
Yeah, there was. Okay, we need a vote on that, then.
Well, let me look at it.
Okay.
Oh, there's nothing there to say. You just look at it all. It's 3018 Hunter's Hill Drive. An existing dwelling, and there's some, it's been sold from one to another. And then they, during the sale, they determined that scientifical compliance had never been applied for. It was an RDA, but the problem was that they built the house next to a pond and wetland area. And the Hunter's Hill Order of Conditions stated that those lots had to be delineated, marked. They never were. And the new owner didn't read either, it was one of those things.
Okay, so it says just lot 95, map 22.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you do? You want to sign this signature?
The next one is from Tant Yacov. They had a contract that was supposed to do their dredging, but he never, never started, never stopped. They're in danger of losing their extension. They can't work now from April, from
Well, April, yeah.
March. March 1st to August 30th, because of herring runs, and so they asking for an extension to their order of conditions. And I don't see any reason why we can't grant one.
I move that we extend your conditions for
And I'll second that.
And we extend it, we would, we extend it for the whole three-year period.
Yes.
Was there a vote on it? Do we have a first, do we have a motion and a second?
I second it.
Charlie, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what's next on the agenda?
Menton Rogers, lot 14, parcel four main street.
He hasn't done anything of, nothing that, he hasn't honored our enforcement order. And he's embroiled now in a tussle with the border health. He's applied for septic system repair for what he called an existing home. The border health agent says it's not a home, it was a commercial property. And they're not going to schedule a, a pit test. And I think Mr. Rogers is going to seek legal advice to see.
Well, we still have an enforcement order, of course
We still have an enforcement order.
The border health knows that.
I'm sure it is.
The wetland line comes right up to his, or just shy, well, 15 feet shy of his proposed dwelling.
But there is no existing septic system now.
There was an existing septic system, and probably in the swamp, I don't know where that, but there, there was a septic system. There was water, and he has photographic proof that it was inhabited, that people ate in it, and slept in it, and defecated in it.
All right, well
The hinge is whether it was a house. It, it was basically a garage and a shed, but it did store immigrant laborers that picked crops.
Yeah, but, and we'll let the border health decide whether it was a legal action.
And that's what's happening right now. But at our end, the wetland right behind that property is not going to go away. The gentleman sitting right there is the guy who flagged it and reaffirmed it. It's on a plan that he submitted to us, it's definitely a wetland, and he put eight or 10 inches of soil over it. The sedge, sedges have grown right through it, it's right back to where it was. And it's not going away.
All right. Tell us about Matt Warhurst.
Pardon?
Matt Warhurst.
They can't do anything until the planning board, they have a deal with the planning board. This is Center Street Woods. The planning board has a hold on any new construction, so they can't file. And there's a little discussion now about, they cleared land that may cause a problem with a house that's already way below grade.
No worries.
They built the drainage system just to accommodate it, and I don't know how it, but that'd be settled with the order of conditions. We approved clearance for one lot. But the previous owner, and I guess still the current owner, had both lots cleared at the same time to save a little money. The enforcement order was issued because they had cleared lot four, it was just supposed to be lot three, they cleared four, too.
Well, that stands just like it is.
DeRosa just needs to be prodded, he has to follow a noticement tent. He promised to do that, but Brandon Faniff, at that time, was busy, and we gave him a, a break to
Can't give my, can't give anybody a break.
What's that?
You gotta, can't give anybody a break, they're just gonna follow through and do what they're supposed to do.
Well, we're gonna follow through, but Brandon was busy as hell, and he couldn't prepare an order of condition, a noticement tent for the guy, so.
Wait, this is for Warhurst, or for?
Oh, for DeRosa.
Oh, DeRosa, oh, okay, all right, okay, you
The other one, I mean, they want to go ahead, they're dying to go ahead, but planning board
Okay.
is holding them back.
Okay. Correspondence, I guess.
So we just Continualities, just as is. Is that what that, Jim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading ahead on the minute.
Oh, okay, you want to discuss them and go after we're done, or you want to do that now?
Well, it's, it's on the list, Charlie's got it here for next.
What's that?
Correspondence.
Yeah, we've got some approvals to make here, too. Very, very, right, right. Mass Housing Finance, you got a copy of the, they did grant them a permit for a 40-beam strawberry fields, it's in part of your package.
Miss Strawberry Fields.
No, they still have to apply to us, though, correct?
Oh, yeah, they have to go through the ZBA and to us again, but we're right back to the same place.
Yeah, we're, we're last one.
Yeah.
What, what are we, what are we doing here? Oh, okay, we skipped over sentence one.
We're on the second page. Number two.
All right.
That's this, there's not much you can do except wait for the application. We have an invoice.
Oh, that's the same spot, right?
Looks like I forgot something here. No, I didn't, okay. We have a bill payable to Nova Armstrong. They submitted a bill for an invoice for $2,595 for work they did at Blue Wave SOA on Streamlight. It's all right of ways back there.
Right, $2,595. Okay, so that comes out of the 53G?
53G.
And there is enough money in that, too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So you need three, three pieces, see?
Okay, I move that we approve the signing for the 53G account to Nova Armstrong.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're giving money back to these people on, uh, number four, Charlie?
Yeah, actually, uh, we've always played it pretty close. We had a $5,000 53G. And they've got a couple of grand, they got $4,000 coming back. But to get it, we need to, uh, Bill Duth to sign this, letter to the treasurer. She won't release the money without his approval.
Okay, uh, I made the motion that we release money from the 53G accounts to... Was it John Duvalley, he's the only one?
Yep, both, both with John Duvalley.
Uh, for the amounts, uh, enclosed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded it?
I did.
There you go again.
That's all right.
Let me show you that. We've got another bill to pay, I'm pretty sure. Yep. This is for survey of zero oak, uh, Council Oak Way, our property we got over there. The ending amount is $3,786.25 for office research, registry research, online research, one-man recovery, preliminary survey of fieldwork, additional survey of fieldwork, property line calculations, data transfer, lot stakeout, CAD drafting, review drafting, final drafting, meeting with public officials.
And who's this, who's this from?
This is from John Delano and Associates. Invoice number 9220. But the total for the, uh, survey of that and installation of, uh, markers was $3,078.25.
Just build signature on that. Okay, I move that we... What is this, that's a payroll voucher?
Yes.
That we approve, payroll voucher?
If we approve the one from, uh, that, yeah, the vote, second?
Right there.
That's the last one. Did you make a motion for that one?
I'm making the motion that we, that we approve the payroll voucher to John Delano.
That's, uh, that's an invoice.
From whom? Who was this one?
Number four, Jim.
That's number six.
Number five.
Yeah, it's number, yeah, yeah, number five.
There is no, where, where's the number five?
Read through number four and then you'll get the number five. Review invoice from 9220.
Okay, all right, I see it.
Oh, I see what happened.
Yeah, Jack's paying attention, if you only want to pay attention.
Okay.
Jim spotted it, too.
I deleted something and incorporated two.
Yeah.
Okay, I moved that we, uh, pay for services on Council Oak Way in the, in the amount of $3,786.25.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye, okay, there you go.
And that's my payroll voucher.
Okay, we don't have to do anything on that, right?
No. The New England Power thing is, uh, I guess National Grid wants to rehab the circuits that are listed on there. And they put a, a proposal into DEP, and DEP is, uh, found it wanting. So we received an email correspondence from BSC Group. They're gonna file with the commission for whatever they plan to do in Dayton. I mean, the line runs through 13 towns.
And they'll have to file with 13 towns.
Yes. I think that's, that's what they found lacking when they approved.
Yeah. They used to warn us when they were gonna do it.
Yeah, but this is different. You know, if they just drive through and they have to put a guide, fix a pole or a guy wire or, or the poles, that's regular, uh, repair and maintenance. But this was a little bit more involved than that.
Yeah. And they'd interfere with the new solar. The new solar plant, necessarily, is on the other side of the tower line. They're gonna have to cross the tower line for the new solar.
No, I think they're gonna be on this side.
It's gotta cross right over.
Oh, that's right. So it'll be right up near, uh, the, uh, Hunter's Hill.
That is Hunter's Hill, yeah. I think they'll be going over.
But it must still belong to...
He bought it, he bought it off Kingsley.
Oh, so they're involved, too?
Not the Kingsley. Kingsley sold the land to the engineer who built the first two solar panels on.
Okay.
He's gonna build on the other side of the tower line.
Well, but he's not building it. Marigo is, is gonna build it.
Yeah, Marigo's gonna build it.
But it'll still be owned by the same company that built the first two fields, no?
No, it's a different company.
The guy that designed and built the two, the two panels that are there?
Yeah.
He bought it personally, he bought the land. And he's gonna lease it to the company.
Ah. Little quickie there.
Yeah, he got a, he got, going pretty good with Bruce Kingsley, I guess.
Oh, yeah, Bruce must've needed the...
Bruce always needs. Oh, I should've sat down on TV. Should I have?
Okay, uh, we gotta, we gonna talk to Dominigo?
You wanna, you wanna do it, you wanna do it, why don't we do it after we close?
Okay. If we've got a discussion, we should do it on camera, not off camera. That's not the way it works.
Okay, let's discuss it.
Good.
I thought the last time when we took a vote that, uh, the lien was gonna be hours for a buck.
That was my assumption.
How, Charlie, how did you get that assumption?
By, by looking at the email correspondence between the, they sent us a copy of every discussion that lawyers had back and forth. And every one of those said, "Transfer of land for a dollar." But that was never Bruce's, uh, not Bruce, we're talking about a different guy. Dominigo, Dominigo's intention. His father wanted to sell it for 30 grand. This guy wants a suspect. It's $11,000.
It's the only piece of property on that marsh that you cannot use. It's protected by the state with, with the state rigs. Most of that lot that he's trying to sell you is the one that his father tried to sell me.
You were willing to buy it?
Yeah, I was, 'cause I thought we were getting both pieces.
Well, when, when...
But we weren't getting both pieces.
Well, when Steve Dominigo dies, we'll get the other piece.
Well...
But right now, his father is deceased.
Right.
And he's trying to get rid of the property. And we have been trying to buy parcels all around that marsh.
That we can use.
What do we use? We can't use any of those. We're doing it to protect the marsh.
No, Charlie.
Yes.
No. Charlie, everything we bought, we can use.
For what?
You, you can, you can put a boardwalk on it, you can, you can go out and take students on it.
You can put a boardwalk on that, too.
No, you can't.
Why?
Because the map he showed you...
Put your pants up.
Oh, I'm good. The map he gave you, I got one here somewhere, yeah. Doesn't look like the map that you should've saw.
I copied it from MapGeo, our town official map.
Right, but you showed me the, you showed me the borderline. Now, wait a minute. You showed me the, the, the side, the boundaries is what you showed me on your map.
Yeah.
Now, this is, when you told me it was, we were gonna get it for a dollar, I colored it in. And that's the lot. And you can see how the whole thing is, more than half of the lot is underwater all the time.
It's not underwater.
Yes, it is.
This right here has actually got trees on it, this...
This, this is, uh...
I know who owns that. This piece right here that it juts out?
Yeah.
Has, is high and has the same amount of trees that this property has.
No.
Yes.
No.
Tony Roderick, this parcel goes right up to Tony Roderick's. And this area right here is treed, solid oak grove.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's upland trees.
That's Tony's, that's Tony's.
No, that's not Tony, that's on here. Tony's got a backyard, that's all grass except for some trees right in this area. Tony's backyard is devoid of trees, period, right to here. Trees are on this property.
But you can't get out there because of all these...
What difference does that make? If we're buying property to, to protect the marsh...
No, Charlie, it's already protected. We buy what we need, we, we buy what we can to use.
We can't use any of that marsh.
Yes, we can, we can use all of the marsh. But we can't, we can't put a bridge across this, 'cause a, a, a bridge would be crazy. This is the only piece in the whole salt marsh that we can't use.
I'm not buying it, but, uh...
That's the only piece.
That's your piece, so what? We can't use any of these other pieces, either.
Course you can.
How? They all belong to different people. We can't use this, we can't use that.
The yellow ones belong to us.
Yeah, we own this now, we own that, now we can't cross here. Why did we buy that? That came with this?
That came with that. This came with, this came with this and this. 38 acres. We have a trail from here through this...
Wait a minute, this is the property we bought over here.
This was with it, Charlie.
No.
Yeah. I, I purchased this from Kingsley, 38 acres, including this.
I should've brought my plans with me. I left them home. I didn't expect to get, uh, ambushed, but...
You're not getting ambushed, I'm telling you.
Well, you were trying to tell me there was a lot between here and there. There was not. This is the same lot that I showed you on my map?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you didn't show me the creek, you didn't show me the river coming in here from the marsh.
What are you talking about? I showed you the whole damn marsh.
No, you showed me, you, you had a, you had the boundary lines on a piece of paper like this. You didn't show the, you didn't show the creek coming. This, this lot is underwater all the time.
No, it's not. This pot is not underwater because it's got trees on it. It's elevated.
Even if it does, there's no way to access this back area. It's, it's, it's dead.
Access right from here.
You can't cross that, you can't, you can't fill salt marsh. That's even the problem with the other land that we're looking at over here. There's a driveway that goes into a little bit of Highland area, but the salt marsh is reclaiming the drive.
But we're gonna buy that parcel. Why we buy one and not the other? What, what's the difference? I can't see a difference. This guy wants $165,000.
No, no way.
I know, but that's what he wants. And I'm not willing to pay that. It's valued at 10 grand. Yeah, well, these hands pick up.
It's his money.
Are you interested in this conversation? We're on camera, we're not gonna do any more off cameras. No more hush-hushes.
My understanding is that the, um, there was some monies that came down for a, an appraisal to be done on that property. So the appraisal, I would assume...
This property?
Yes, on the Simons property.
Simons.
On the Simons property. Yeah. They're waiting for the appraisal to come back. And depending on what that appraisal is, the, um, Open Space Committee has put a brief application for eligibility into the CPC to possibly purchase that parcel of land. But it's all predicated on what the evaluation of that property is. We all know what it is listed as the assessment.
The assessment value is 10 grand.
Correct. But he, for some unforeseen reason, seemed to think that Mr. Simons can put a home there, run his septic through and across under 138 and have the system...
I explained it to you.
So that's, so in, in regards to burning a bullet to put a septic in, I don't think that's gonna happen, honestly, they're not gonna allow them burning on 138. Especially, I believe, in a wetland area. This is just my own personal belief, I'm not getting this from any experts. But we're still waiting for what the appraisal cost is gonna be. And CPC, where are the negotiators? Negotiators are right now between the Open Space Committee, Mr. Simons, and the town administrator. So I just believe the town administrator will have the final say if anyone is going to purchase, possibly purchase that parcel of land. That's how I see things. And Mr. Didges is right, because I did take a ride down there, okay, when there was no snow on the ground and walked that property. And where his proposed driveway is, he doesn't even have enough turnaround on that property to do anything, number one. Secondly, yes, there is marsh grass that's popping up through his driveway. It's coming out.
It's been reclaimed.
It's reclaiming it, it's, it's moving back in.
So he doesn't have a driveway anymore?
So, I, you know, that's something for this board, if it ever comes to fruition, it's gonna happen.
They wanted to build a house, they'd have to file. And all that would've been, would be brought up.
Absolutely.
What he had was a plan drawn showing the possibility of sticking your house in. But the house, it just about fits, a little square area that is beyond any setback.
So I don't believe at this time that, um, the way things sit is, we're still, again, we're waiting for the appraisal. And I don't believe that, um, conservation, I hate to use this term analogy, but would be on the hook to use any of their funds to purchase that property. So I think the, right now, you guys would be basically out of the picture and negotiators, like I said, are gonna be through the, the homeowner, the Open Space Committee, and...
We already made an offer to him and he refused it, so, so we're out of it.
Yes.
We're not gonna, we will not offer any more than what we did.
So now the best course of action is to wait for an appraisal that someone had given grant on this one.
We're discussing a different parcel right now.
Yeah. But I thank you for your time, and that's the only explanation I have on the possible purchase of Mr. Simons' property. So that's all I can offer this time. As a matter of fact, I did receive an email from Mrs. Goodlack, who is the chair of Open Space, and it asked her that if we're in the process of going for an appraisal, and they've only done an application for eligibility, application to the CPC, is to fill out, and as best as they can, an application for funding to the CPC, can they just always fill in the amount requested at the end? Which would not be a problem. See, here's the thing now, we are already in March 12th. Especially the regular annual town meetings in June. Well, depending on appraisal, you know, if this appraisal comes back and it's, it's late May, it may not make the warrant. So just may, may not get the monies that he'd like for that property, this time meeting.
Well, then maybe someone should speed up the appraisal process. Now, Sipit is, Sipit is involved in that appraisal?
They, um, no, I've, um, who was the entity?
I don't know the, I don't know the appraiser's name.
I mean, the entity who had given the money for the appraisal, that was through Sipit, those, that grant was for the appraisal cost.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That was done through Sipit.
But, but, uh, Open Space people got the, got the money from Sipit for the appraisal and the surveying of that lot, Simons' lot.
Because what we do with CPC is we always, we've made it a point to have any, um, projects that go before town meeting to do that at the annual time meeting and not any special. We don't wanna set a precedent of, of doing special time meetings because you just don't have enough timeframe to receive somebody's application, say, after the regular annual time meeting's over, and then you have a special in December. If somebody were to come to us between September and, or June and December, we still may not have enough time to just put everything together in order to...